Number six, that is $6.1 million. They have done all the, um, the earthwork has been completed, the plumbing and electrical. We're looking at approximately by April of 2023 of completion for this project. And that, this is the, the station that's in the corner of Schubach and Military. 6.1 million on that project. The next two project, the next two projects, we, uh, we have Taylor Road Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is $6 million. Again, that's widening Taylor Road from Expressway to Business 83. A hundred percent of PSNE has been submitted to TechStot, uh, right away acquisition and railroad permit. And so the construction should start September of this year for that widening of Taylor Road from a business to, um, Expressway to Business 83. Phase Two is, is $9 million and that's from Business 83 to Mile Two. Uh, 90% of the plans have been submitted to TechStot. Uh, we're looking at August of 2023 for this Phase Two, uh, project of, of Taylor Road. Again, that would be widening Taylor Road from Expressway all the way to Mile Two, uh, going north. The next project is a manhole rehab. That's a, uh, manholes that we're currently doing here at, at, at our city, 250,000, uh, 11 manholes. Uh, we are looking at, at starting construction next month. Uh, again, um, going through, uh, ARPA funding for this, 250,000. Uh, we should start, uh, by, by August of, uh, this year. 11, 11 manhole rehabs. The next one is a North Conway sanitary sewer project, 677,000. This is from Mile Two to Mile Three. Uh, that is, uh, the construction started in February of this year. Uh, we're looking at 10 months for that, uh, particular project. So that, this will, uh, provide sewer going north on Conway. Uh, we have already seen the development in that area where we are, uh, seeing a, an IHOP coming in and of course, other businesses that are interested in that area already. So we, we will see that development coming up in the future. Uh, the Sherry Road Sewer, that's, uh, we're looking at property, 250,000. Uh, property is currently in, under condemnation. Uh, that's again, um, going north on Sherry Road for sewer. And the last, uh, project that we will be discussing, uh, for update is the, um, the reuse line. This is the, uh, $1.8 million reuse line that was, um, for the, uh, irrigation purposes. And this is water affluent from our wastewater treatment plant, uh, for, uh, irrigation purposes. And so we'll be, um, instead of the water going through our, our, our drain ditches, it'll go through, uh, to be reused for irrigation purposes and, and sold as, as needed through agreements. Um, total, uh, total law projects that I've discussed today that we're currently working on, 89.2 million. Uh, that includes a combination of, you know, uh, local, federal, state funding, uh, again, just, just construction projects, 33 projects, 89.2 million. Any specific questions on these? We'll be providing updates, um, throughout, uh, possibly quarter, if not quarterly, if not sooner, uh, as necessary to give, uh, the mayor and the council an update on projects that we're currently working on. Any questions?
On this report, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On this report, can we put a column? I mean, what is it that was presented on first quarter, second quarter?
Yes.
And that way we can see the progress?
Yes. Yes, we can. Certainly can. All right. Thank you.
That concludes the, that workshop. Um, and we'll go right into our, uh, regular meeting scheduled for 4:30. And today's date is Monday, July the 25th. Uh, this, um, uh, can you establish forum, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Jessica Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Here.
Councilman Albiel Flores.
Here.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Here.
Mayor, we've established a forum.
Okay, thank you. The next item is invocation and, and please, please back.
Have everyone please back. Heavenly Father, may everything we do begin with your inspiration. Lord, you know that we seek you first in all that we do for our citizens and our community. Let our work always find its origin in you and through you to reach its completion. In his name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your God-awful, which is sanctified, one nation, under God, indivisible, representative, and just as for all.
Please. The next item is a disclosure of conflicts of interest. Are there any?
No, ma'am, I did not receive any.
No? Okay. Uh, next item, uh, we'll move on to presentations. We have a Mission CISD program presentation, Making a Difference.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, Mission, our school district will be making a presentation to, uh, City of Mission for participating in a program they have called Making a Difference. And it deals with volunteers coming into our facilities to, to assist staff. So here on behalf of Mission CISD, we have Ms. Cruz, the executive director, and I'm not too sure if Dr. Carol Perez is here, but if so, if they can both join me up here in the front. They will be making the presentation to staff.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Francisca Cruz and I'm the executive, um, director for special education and other areas. And I'm part of the executive leadership team for the school district. Dr. Perez, uh, should be here shortly. She's trying her best to, to make it here. She's got a very tight schedule today. However, I'm here to present, uh, a small token of appreciation to some of your team members here in the city for the wonderful support that they provided to our district and to our 18-plus program. What our 18-plus program is, it's a, it's a program that serves special needs students. And the goal of the program is to provide them the opportunities to gain skills that will prepare them for the independent living after high school. The program provides students with on-the-job coaching and training and opportunities, opportunities to have social interactions with other adults and experience a real-world work setting. We have several partnerships throughout the district. Uh, Mission is one of our biggest and most supportive partners here. Uh, we work very closely with your HR department and your library services with Ms. Kathy Hernandez and Ms. Edna Morales. They provided, uh, a lot of support and have provided activities for our students ranging from preparing materials for library activities, filing, shredding, all the different activities that, uh, will give them that experience that they need to improve their lives. They come in daily, uh, for approximately two hours every day, not all at once. We have approximately 22 students that are serviced with the City of Mission. And they do rotate and the, your team has been wonderful providing those opportunities every day for at least two hours a day during the school year. We are looking forward to another great year and we just wanted to make sure that we were here to present this small token of appreciation and want to express our sincere gratitude for your support and we look forward to another successful school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so we have our plaques here and I think our ladies are here, Ms. Kathy, Kathy Hernandez and Ms. Edna Morales.
Are they here? There we go. Thank you very much for your support.
[applause] Thank you. Okay. Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I was speaking with a teacher. I'm sorry.
Why not? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
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 The next item is the Employee of the Month. Ms. Muggier.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we'd like to present to you our Employee of the Month for June. Uh, it is Ms. Patricia Flores. She's our legal assistant. She was nominated by Ms. Chrissy Cantu and I'd like to ask both of them to please come join me up here.
She's actually a paralegal now.
Oh, yeah?
She just got her certification from Texas A&amp;M University.
Good. And Ms. Chrissy Cantu would be, will be reading her nomination.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council and City Manager. Ms. Patty. It was my privilege to recommend my colleague Patty Flores to receive the Employee of the Month for June 2022. Her personality and work ethic are just a few of the attributes that make her a valuable asset to not only the legal department, but to the City of Mission as a whole. She possesses elegant mannerisms and dignity. She is quick to offer help, volunteers at many events, and is a team player. She brings out the spirit in others with her gift of making others laugh. When not at work, her smile and spirit are missed. With hard work and determination, Ms. Patty recently obtained her paralegal certificate from A&amp;M International University. This shows her dedication to her field and continues to be motivated to embark on advancing even more to help the citizens of the City of Mission. For all these reasons and more, I am honored to recognize Ms. Patty Flores. She is deserving of this award. Thank you, Patty, for your hard work. The City of Mission appreciates all that you do.
Ms. Flores' family is here as well, so we'd like to ask them to please come up to the front.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Oh, good. Good smile. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're so proud.
Yeah. Okay. The next item is a proclamation by Chief Torres.
Good afternoon, Mayor, uh, City Council and City Manager. World Day Against Trafficking in Persons provides an opportunity for the City of Mission and Hidal County to renew our commitment in combating human trafficking in all its forms and whereas the year's theme focuses on the role of technology as a tool that can both enable and impede human trafficking. Technology allows these criminals to operate internationally across jurisdictions and evade detection with greater ease. And whereas the internet and digital platforms offer traffickers numerous tools to recruit, exploit, and control victims. Organize or transport in accommodations, advertise victims, and communicate amongst perpetrators. And whereas traffickers use social media to identify, groom, and recruit victims, including children, messaging services are used for coercion of the victims. And online platforms allow traffickers to widely advertise services, provide victims, including child sexual abuse materials. And whereas the City of Mission Police Department, along with Hidal County District Attorney's Office, are working with national, state, regional, and local stakeholders to fight against human trafficking and provide assistance to victims of human trafficking. And whereas we must join together as a community to provide a safe haven by protecting victims and prosecuting traffickers, which improve victim identifications, medical and social services, training for first responders, and increase public awareness. The men and women and children who have suffered this scourge can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, receive protection and justice, and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. And now therefore, we, the City Council and City of Mission, declare July 30th, 2022 as World Day Against Trafficking in Persons in Mission, Texas and Hidal County and recognize the Rio Grande Valley Anti-Human Trafficking Task Force, which calls on the people in our community to report human trafficking and enjoy their prevention efforts. Uh, proclaim on the 25th day of July, 2022.
I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item are the departmental reports. Are there any questions or comments in reference to the report in your packet?
Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Citizens' participation?
Yes, ma'am. I've got Mr. Noe Salinas.
Your name and address, please.
Noe Salinas, address 520 East 11th Street. So, um, reason why I'm here, we applied for a conditional permit back in, it was May. It went under review by the PNC Committee, uh, in June. It got approved and then last, last month, uh, we had the, the permit, the conditional permit denied by council. So we re, reapplied and appealed. Um, at that meeting last month, we weren't able to provide feedback. I think we were muted and we weren't able to chime in on, on some information. So we reapplied and this property is located on 722 East 8th Street and we're trying to get a drive-through approved. Um, we've already checked with neighbors to see if there's any, um, you know, appeals or any, anybody saying they don't want it. And we got all the vice versa. You know, we got a lot of support from citizens around that plaza to go ahead and, you know, expand the, the drive-through. However, we weren't able to get that processed or approved on the committee, on PNC committee meeting a couple of weeks back. So here we are, trying to get this item approved. It's CUP 22-43. Um, it was supposed to have been listed on the agenda for today, but I found out today that it was not. So our time, you all's time is ve- very valuable, so is mine. Uh, I want to know why it didn't get listed. We would want some consideration. We think we abide to all the requirements for parking, as well as other conditions. However, PNC has denied, you know, based on what we think is just an opinion. So, I ask for your reconsideration for this item to get back onto the agenda for consideration of the council. With that, I can yield my time.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you, can you meet with Mr. Salinas, please?
I can, but just inform me that you do have the right to reconsider it. You can bring it back if you so like at the next meeting. But I'll have to speak with Salinas.
All right. Well, if, if that's the case, then we'll bring it back at the next meeting so he doesn't have to go back.
There wasn't issue, yeah, of course. There wasn't issue with planning and zoning where he didn't get out of planning and zoning and there wasn't a second and it kind of failed.
Okay.
So, you do have the right to reconsider it. Because he did reaply, it's not really reconsideration. It's coming before you.
Then, then let's do that. Let's see it at our next agenda, next meeting.
As a public hearing.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Any, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. We have David Norick.
Hi, good afternoon, City Councilmen, Councilwomen, and Mayor. Congratulations. My name is David Norick. I am a local author. And according to Wallet Hub, for the fifth year in a row, the area of McAllen, Mission, and Edinburgh has been listed as the fattest places, or the fattest place in the United States of America. Nearly forty percent of the valley is diabetic or prediabetic. I lost my brother to diabetes in 2013, my sister to diabetes in 2014. And from those tragedies, I was inspired to write this book, The Adventures of Exo and Si, which is a play on the word exercise. In this book, there are eleven different exercises that kids are encouraged to do as they learn about healthy eating. This book was the first ever non-food product to be chosen as a finalist for the HEB Quest for Texas Best Competition. I just appeared on the TV show Two Minute Drill with David Melzer. It's on Apple TV and Bloomberg TV. And I also have, have auditioned this book for, for Shark Tank. And one of the things that I've wanted to do is just be, can't even think of the word. I, I want to be proactive, I don't know if that's the right word, with trying to get not only the city of Mission, but the valley out of that ugly distinction of being the fattest place to live in the United States of America. One of the things we've done is something called Fit Lit. So we've, what we've done is we've put the book on these big metal signs. Now, these big metal signs go along a, a city park and as families walk the, the trails, they can do the exercises that are on this park. So not only do they read and, and, and learn about healthy eating, they also do the exercises as they walk. The very first part was, was done in the city of Harlingen. We also did one in the city of Edinburgh, but this is where I make my residence here in Mission. And I would love to have a Fit Lit Park here in the city of Mission. Now, we've left blank spaces on the bottom of these, of these pages so that we can have sponsors. But like in this page, for example, where there is an exercise, I would love for city leaders such as yourselves to be recorded doing the exercises. So when families go and they, they scan a QR code and it takes them to a video showing me reading the page and you guys doing the exercises. And what better way to encourage healthy eating and exercise and by doing something like this, a Fit Lit Park? And I hope to encourage the city of Mission to, to maybe just consider having one of these. They've been very successful and thank you so much for your time. I do have a book for, for all of you guys up here so you guys can have and just take into consideration. And thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Randy, do you have his contact number?
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so, thank you very much. Anyone else?
I don't have anyone else.
No? Okay. Anyone online? No? Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to the public hearings and the first is a rezoning request. Who's doing the presentation?
So you can hear us?
Yeah.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number seven is a rezoning for all of Lot 1, Block 2, Erdal subdivision. This is from C3 General Business to R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Jose E. Rivera. The council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Mile 1 South Road and South Holland Avenue. The surrounding zones include General Business to the north and east, Duplex/Fourplex to the west, and Single Family Residential to the south. The future land use map shows this area as low density. The site has an old, uh, commercial structure that is probably very costly to upgrade. A viable alternative is to award the R1 to then have the structure demolished and to build an attractive single-family residence that will assimilate well with a predominant single-family neighborhood. Lastly, the R1 fits directly with the future land use map designation. PNC and staff recommended approval. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of this item? In favor or in opposition? Anyone online? No? Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Or not, a motion to be offered?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request from C3 to R1, which would be all of Lot number 1, Block 2, Erdal subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and that would carry ordinance number 5192. The next item?
Item number eight is a rezoning for a .102 of 1 acre tract of land out of a tract of land adjacent to Lot 176 and Lot 186, John H. Sherry subdivision. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to C3 General Business. The applicant is Best Assets LLC in care of Ryan Stauffer. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Victoria Avenue and Taylor Road. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north, city of McAllen to the east, commercial, general business to the west, and heavy commercial to the south. The future land use map shows this area as general business. The proposed zone does comply with city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? To this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Nothing online? Are there any questions or motions?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request from C3 to R1, which would be all of Lot number 1, Block 2, Erdal subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and that would carry ordinance number 5192. The next item?
Item number eight is a rezoning for a .102 of 1 acre tract of land out of a tract of land adjacent to Lot 176 and Lot 186, John H. Sherry subdivision. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to C3 General Business. The applicant is Best Assets LLC in care of Ryan Stauffer. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Victoria Avenue and Taylor Road. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north, city of McAllen to the east, commercial, general business to the west, and heavy commercial to the south. The future land use map shows this area as general business. The proposed zone does comply with city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? To this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Nothing online? Are there any questions or motions?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the request from AOI to C3 of .102 of an acre out of Lot 176 and Lot 186, John H. Sherry subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that's ordinance number 5193. Next item?
The next item is item number nine, is a rezoning of a 1 acre tract of land, more or less, out of the south, five acres of Lot 30-7, West Edition to Sherinah. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to C4 Heavy Commercial. The applicant is VMK Investment Group LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately a quarter of a mile east, on the east side of Conway and north of East Mile 2 Road. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the north and east, general business to the west and south. The future land use map shows this area as general commercial. Staff note that the proposed R4 zone does not comply with city's future land use map. However, this business has been in operation since 2018 without any complaints. The, the applicant currently has a contractor's yard and he's wanting to, to incorporate the correct zoning. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? In favor or in opposition of this rezoning request? Mr. Gadsa, are you online?
Good afternoon, Mayor Gadsa and City Council. This is Victor Gadsa of VMK Investment Group. Thank you for your time. We, this is actually, is going to be a two-part process. We're requesting the rezoning because we actually need to request, or have already requested a conditional use permit. We're in dire need of a larger office for our business and we've acquired a, a new office, a new portable building that we're bringing in and we're, we're going to go before planning and zoning later this week. So this is just the first step in the process to request a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any questions for staff or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the request for rezoning to, from A1, AOI to C4. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and that's ordinance number 1594. Next item?
The next item is item number 10. It's a rezoning for a 1.59 acre tract of land out of Lot 205, John H. Sherry subdivision. This is from AOI Agricultural Open Interim to C3 General Business. The applicant is Lamar Strong. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located along the east side of Sherry Road, approximately 650, 615 feet south of East Business Highway D3. Surrounding zones include general business to the north and south, single-family residential to the east and to the west, heavy commercial. The future land use map shows this area as general business. The proposed zone does comply with city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Are there any questions?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request of 1.59 acre land out of Lot number 205 out of John H. Sherry subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that's ordinance 19, 1595.
5195.
Five, 5195, we're okay, I'm a little dyslexic. 5195, yes. Thank you. Next item?
The, the next item would be item 11, is a rezoning of all of Lot 1, Brian Road Medical Plaza subdivision. This is currently zoned C1 Office Building and they're proposing C2 Neighborhood Commercial. The applicant is Martha Interiano. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of East Griffin Parkway and Brian Road. Surrounding zones include Single Family Residential and Neighborhood Commercial to the north, Office Building and Single Family Residential to the east, to the west, Single Family Residential, and to the south, Office Building. The proposed, uh, the future land use map shows this area as general commercial. The proposed zone does comply with city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. Staff and PNC recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No? Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning of Lot 1 from C1 to C2 out of the Brian Road Medical Plaza subdivision. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that's ordinance 5196. Next item, number 12?
The next item is a rezoning for a tract of land containing 14.269 acres being out of Lot 27-5, West Edition to Sherinah. This is from AOI, single, I mean, Agricultural Open Interim to R1 Single Family Residential. The applicant is Melvin and Hunt. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately half a mile north of West Griffin Parkway along the east side of Holland Road. Surrounding zones include R1 to the north, mobile and modular homes to the west and south, and to the south is the Mission Lateral. The future land use map shows this area as low-density residential. The proposed zone does comply with city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. PNC and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you. At the PNC meeting, there were some concerns that were brought up in regards to drainage for this area. But that would be taken care of at the subdivision stage.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? Anybody online? No? Okay. Are there any questions?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request of 14.269 acres out of Lot 27-5, West Edition to Sherinah, from AOI to R1. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and that's five zero and that's ordinance 5197. Next item?
The next item is item number 13, is a conditional use permit to place a portable building for office use. This would be at 302 South Taylor Road. This is out of a 1.02 of 1 acre tract of land out of a tract of land adjacent to Lot 176 and 186, out of John H. Sherry. It was recently zoned, uh, general business. The applicant is Best Assets LLC in care of Ryan Stauffer. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northwest corner of Victoria and Taylor Road. The applicant desires to place a 12 by 64 modular office for the general contractors of the Jeep dealership. All setbacks will be complied with. Days and hours of operation will be Monday to Friday from 8 to 5. He's proposing two employees. Based on the square footage of the building, there's a total of five parking spaces that will be required, including one handicap. PNC and staff recommended approval for one year, subject to compliance with building, fire, parking, landscaping, and sign codes. CUP not to be transferable to others and to obtain a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against the conditional use permit that is being requested? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against the conditional use permit as requested? Is there anybody online? Are there any questions?
What type of business is this going to be?
They're proposing a contractor office, general contractor office.
This is a contractor that's working currently at the Jeep dealership, the Burns. They're proposing to house employees there.
To a house, to live there?
No, not to, to use as an office.
So it's not like a sales officer?
No, sir, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It was just only so that they could work out of that office, the employees and the contractor. There's going to be no people going as far as for sales.
Yeah, so it'll be me and my business partner, Josh Belgum. We have very limited people in and out. Most of our correspondence is done electronically or over the phone, or we obviously go to the job sites. So, it's really small, really limited, and doesn't take up a whole lot of room.
Can we have your name and number for the record, please?
Yeah.
I mean, your name and address, sorry.
Yeah. Ryan Stauffer, 302 South Taylor Road, Mission, Texas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I just want to, this is one of, very nice area of our community and it's a lot of traffic. I mean, we have a lot of commercial buildings around there that are very nice, a lot of residential homes with a value of about a half of a million dollars. So, I don't know, we want to put a portable building. So, I was, I mean, so, I mean, I would like if we do so, make sure we, we keep up with the landscaping and are you going to put parking? How's it?
Yeah, we're going to pave it all, put, obviously, the five parking spaces required by the Planning and Zoning Committee. We also send a picture of what we're doing to the building once we put it on the property and a complete, like, complete redo of the front. It'll look like that. So, got everything lined up for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I move for approval, Mayor.
There's a motion? And a second to grant the conditional use permit as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that carries ordinance number 5198. Next item?
Item number 14 is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window. This is for Scooter's Coffee at 700 North Sherry Road. This is out of a 1 acre tract of land out of Lot 205, Johnny Sherry subdivision. It's currently zoned C3. The applicant is Lamar Strong. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located along the east side of Sherry Road, approximately 615, 15 feet south of Business Highway D3. The applicant desires to build a 664 square foot coffee shop with a drive-through service window with, with two drive-through lanes. All building setbacks will be complied with. Days and hours of operation are Sunday through Saturday from 5:30 a.m. to 7:30. They're proposing 10 employees, different shifts. Parking, the applicant is proposing seven parking spaces exceeding code by two. The site plan shows two drive-through lanes that can accommodate a total of 19 cars. Access to the site is off of a driveway cut from the existing access eastman. PNC and staff recommended approval for life reviews, subject to compliance with building, fire, parking, landscaping, sign codes. CUP not to be transferable to others and to obtain a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against the item as presented? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against the item? Anyone online? No? Are there any questions?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the drive-through service window for Scooter's Coffee at 700 North Sherry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously and that's ordinance number 5199. Next item?
Item number 15 is a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window. This is for another Scooter's Coffee located at 2205 North Conway Avenue. This is out of Lot 2, Treats and Eat subdivision. It's currently zoned C3 General Business and the applicant is Lamar Strong. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 395 feet south of Griffin Parkway along the west side of Conway. The applicant desires to build a 664 square foot coffee shop with a drive-through service window with two drive-through lanes. All building setbacks will be complied with. Days and hours of operation are Sunday through Saturday from 5:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. They're proposing 10 employees in different shift. The applicant is proposing 10 parking spaces exceeding code by five. The site plan shows two driveway cuts along the south side of the property. Directional signs will be placed along the first driveway access. PNC and staff recommended approval for life review, subject to compliance with building, fire, parking, landscaping, and sign codes. CUP not to be transferable to others and to obtain a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? No? Any questions?
Is this a franchise?
Yes, sir, it is.
They have breakfast all day?
I'm going to approve, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the drive-through service window at Scooter's Coffee at 2205 North Conway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that's ordinance number 5200. Next item?
Item number 16 is a conditional use permit for a portable building for the cell of water. This is at 3200 North Inspiration Road. This would be out of Lot 1, Gomez Estates subdivision. It's currently zoned C3 and the applicant is Rick Kelly out of the Watermill Express. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located on the northeast corner of Inspiration Road and Mile 2. This is, uh, behind El Corita Drive-Thru Convenience Store. The applicant has a self-sustained, fully automated Watermill Express portable structure for the cell of purified water. The applicant would like to replace the aging unit with a new model that is more functional, customer-friendly, best ice in addition to the water. The primary access to the site is off of Two Mile Road. The primary access to the site is off of Two Mile Road. The structure is located twenty-four feet from the property line to the north and twenty-five feet from the east, which is complying with the required setbacks. Hours of operation are twenty-four hours a day. Watermill technicians conduct service inspections on a daily basis to ensure that the water dispensing unit is clean and functionally. PNC and staff recommended approval for life reviews. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against this, uh, conditional use permit? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against this, uh, conditional use permit request? Is there anyone online? Are there any questions?
Move for approval, Mayor.
Second? There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as, uh, requested. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero, and that is, uh, ordinance number five two zero one. Next item?
Item number seventeen is a conditional use permit renewal. This is for the sell and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is for Taboo Bar and Grill located at six oh eight North Sherry Road, Suites nine and ten. Out of lot one Alba Plaza. It's currently zoned general business and the applicant is BGD Investment LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an ad- an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of East Sixth Street and Sherry Road. Access to his site is via thirty-foot foot driveway off of Sherry Road. The applicant originally applied for a family-oriented bar and grill restaurant with a large dining area and a bar. It was later discovered that this was more of a nightclub concept rather than their original bar and grill proposal. It is noted that a nightclub is an allowable use under the general business, but the sell and onsite consumption still requires a conditional use permit. This nightclub concept offers food, VIP areas, live music and concerts. Days and hours of operation are Thursday through Sunday from six PM to two AM. Alcoholic beverages will only be served during only, uh, allowable state selling hours. He's proposing fifteen employees. Parking, there's a total of a hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces that are held in common. Section one fifty-six dash three of the zoning code sites that bar cocktail, cocktail lounges, taverns, cantinas, salons, dance halls, disco decks and nightclubs must be three hundred feet from the nearest residence. There is a residential subdivision within three hundred feet. However, PNC and council have waived the separation requirement in previous CUP. In conferring with Mission PD for incidents at this location, reports indicate at least twenty complaints regarding noise, fights, use of weapons, public intoxication, disturbance from, this is from December to present. Staff and PD have met twice with the applicant to address these concerns. In an effort to comply with city's requirements and address these concerns, the applicant has installed his own decibel reader and has restricted the entrance to patrons that have caused problems in the past. PNC and staff recommended approval for six months to reeval- to reevaluate the continue, I'm sorry. Six months reevaluation to continue to assess this operation, waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from the residential homes, continued compliance with building, fire, health, noise and sign codes, continued compliance with TABC requirements and must have at least two securities at all times. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against this request? How many people are allowed in there?
My name is Pleasant George. Actually, I'm the member manager and the owner of this business. Actually, since we opened this business, I believe we opened it in November and, uh, we had two incident, but we had like twenty or maybe more than that calls about sound and weapons. They came in, they checked and everything, but we never had anything inside. And we have two sheriff, since the day we opened, we have them on the door. We don't allow a lot of people to go in like with address codes and everything, but we are getting a lot of fake calls from the other businesses and they say like, oh, there is this problem, that problem. But they have always went there, but there were two times problem, but it was in the parking lot, but never ever inside. But we've been getting always the same calls about these things. We had two times or three times about the sound, so we installed the decibel machine outside and inside and our, we have our sound engineer, he goes and check about that. But they keep on the full, the calls are mostly all fake and they have been came there. Once I got a ticket and just that, the day I realized it, I just put a machine over there. After that, we never had that problem.
Can they just read the citations of the, that they, or the times that they were called?
Chief, uh, chief, can you add any comments to this?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. We received twenty calls for service, uh, since December the twelfth at that location. Ten of them had been loud music disturbances. Seven has, have been, um, disturbances with people. Uh, two have been, uh, weapon disturb, uh, weapons call and one has been a traffic accident. Those were the calls that we received since, which is a total of twenty calls.
When was the last time you got a phone?
I, I don't have that information there, but, uh, it was not too long ago, probably, maybe, I'm just guessing more or less about February, okay, I was gonna say a few months. So February.
Mayor, can I ask a question to the owner? How many, uh, how many, uh, people can go in there at this, at, at one time? Do you have a limit?
We have a capacity of one eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven?
One eighty-seven. And now we already cut that part also, some, some of the days we don't even open. Sometimes we don't even open the upstairs. We just keep it on the downstairs and we put more securities to check everything. I already bought a new metal detector also, just like the last time they said like we are having this problem and they extended my six month. So I bought the, the commercial grid, like the metal detector also, just in case like because it's very hard to check a woman. How can we check a woman? So like we have the guys, they can check the men. So that's why I bought that machine also. But most of those times you're like, it's mostly it's all fake also, most of the time.
Mayor, I got a question for the planning and zoning. When they apply for this type of permit, do they explain to them the importance that there's no clubs that are allowed in Mission, that the sales on food needs to be a certain percentage of the total amount of sales?
Actually, they're, they are allowed. It is an allowable use under a C three. However, we explained to him the difference between what we consider a bar and grill and with what he is conducting is more like of a nightclub. They do have a cover, usually on a bar and grill, they, they don't charge to, to go in, um, but it is an allowable use, uh, under a particular, under the C three zone. The only, the only thing in question, of course, he would need to comply with all the requirements and, uh, the alcohol would require a conditional use permit.
Actually, sir, like, um, we did charge once cover since the day we opened. It was the day we had a fight, which I paid like thirty-eight hundred dollars, even in Buffalo Wild Wings and everywhere they charged for it. And pay thirty-eight hundred dollars, I had thirty-seven people inside. I paid three hundred and seventy dollars and I ended up paying three hundred and sixty hundred. After that, we never even like put the fight there because we know people don't show. And more than a nightclub, we have like a, a live, like a banda and like a, well, that kind of groups they go and play over there. We don't charge cover, we just charge once because of the fight, like it was thirty-eight hundred dollars what I paid to show it there.
There's someone online, Mayor.
Okay.
We've got two people online.
We have two people online? Okay, we're gonna allow the people online to, to speak?
Good to be first.
Fabio Gonzalez?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, hello, good evening.
Go ahead.
Yes, um, first of all, um, I've been to bar and grills and this is not a bar and grill. This is a nightclub. If you check on social media, Facebook, Instagram, you can see people drinking, everything. However, I live, uh, behind that nightclub. Uh, my house is behind it. My house is a two-story house, so I can see what's going on hide, behind it. I have seen fights, I have seen police come there. And I have three kids and one is a newborn. He was born in the, on January, so when he was sleeping, we would always hear the, the noise of the banda. You know, the banda, they use trombones, um, what's it, batacas, like the materias. So they, there's always noise, really, really loud. I sh- I have been called police, everything, and they don't do nothing about it. I always hear fights, everything, and I, I'm not the only one. I see several neighbors in here and it's pretty frustrating, uh, for my kids. I do work in the mornings and it's not only from, uh, Friday to Sunday. I've heard them on, on, on Tuesdays, martes, and sometimes on, on Wednesdays. So it's not even much, it's not on the weekends, it's also on the weekdays. And it's a lot of noise, it's, however, um, two weeks ago, I found some bottles behind my backyard. I have pictures of it and it smelled like piss, so I don't know. I, I wanna put a camera behind it to capture all that, but yes, I just have that complaint that it has been, uh, it has been molesting my family since this, since, uh, February and it's been a lot. It's been a lot. It's too much.
Okay. Uh, let me take the other, uh, the other person that's online.
He's listed as Galaxy Tab A seven Lite.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have his name.
Okay, can, if you're online, Galaxy, uh, can you give us your name and address and proceed?
Yes, hello, my name is Somar Estrada. I live at six eleven Cicamora Avenue in Sherry Crossing. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have a lot of complaints against Taboo, okay? First time, he's not telling the truth, okay? If you don't understand, I, my primary language is Spanish, okay? When they started operating, Taboo started operating from Thursday to Sunday. They would take off only on Monday, but now that they need to renew the, the permit, they only like working four, uh, four days a week. As Slav you say, he's my neighbor. They were, they were working from Thursday to Sunday. They would take off, um, on Monday. I have list of complaints here. First of all, I understand a bar is a, a place where you go to, uh, hear music, you know, have a good time, but not a, not a nightclub. This is a nightclub, okay? Okay, uh, I spoke to the police every day for a month, every day, every night. They will go there and talk to this person and they will lower the noise and they will turn it up again. As Slav you say, my neighbor, she's my neighbor. They have a banda, okay? You know, Atuba, the battery, at twelve AM, they start with that, it's very high. Then the windows on my carhouse, they vibrate. So you can understand the, the loud noise. It's live music. A banda is a live music from, you know, um, original from Mexico. Okay, let me see what else. Okay, they end, they, they end their music at two AM in the morning. I, I'm tell you, telling you again, since, from Tuesday to Sunday, they will take off Monday, but now as, I, I repeat again, they need the permit renewed again. They only working back maybe four days or three days a week. Okay, after two, they're, they're fighting a lot, not on front, they're fighting on the back of the, of the, of the business, you know? The banda, you know, uh, is, uh, on the back of my house and Flavi's house is against my neighbor. They, they cuss a lot, okay? They shout at, at each other, I don't know who it is, but they're like, you get, you need to get to work or get the flip big out of here. They're cussing a lot, okay? They throw bottles at our, our homes, on the backyards. You know, empty bottles on the, on the, on the lawn and, and behind our houses, that's, that's not ours. That's, that's from this, that business, okay? After that, they start make a lot of noise from two to three AM, three, two D, you know, taking the trash out, okay? After that, the mufflers from, from their vehicles, I don't know who it is, employees, the owners, okay? And they start burning tires. That's not fair for us, again. Okay, let me see what else. Okay, we, we, we have family, okay? Everyone has, we have a family, young kids, university, uh, students, okay? It is not fair for a student or their family to hearing the noise all night until three AM and then after that.
Mayor, the three minutes.
I'm hearing cussing a lot and then burning tires. That's not fair to us, okay?
Okay, thank you so much. We have, we have, you've met your, you've met your three minutes, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, we're afraid someone putting a gun and, you know, dying of sleep. That's my only, one of my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? No? Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like the first complaint they say, like people drive in the back. The first time when we get the complaint, we already put the change in chain, nobody's allowed and nobody can even go in the back alley. And the second complaint, they are saying like we are open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Like I told you the last meeting, since I opened the business, there was only two nights. I opened on a Tuesday and we didn't have any clients, that's why we had to close it down. We never ever opened Tuesdays and Wednesdays, never. Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, we never opened it. We tried to open Thursday, we didn't have clients. I started losing a lot of money and then we are open only Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I think last, since the last three months, four months, but we have never opened. I have thirty-two cameras. I think I have five cameras in the back alley. I can bring all the footage and you can look on it like no banda people goes from the back or they comes from the back. It's a five gigabyte, like I have a hard drive, maybe it has months of recording on it. And nobody comes from the back and goes, but the employees, they do park in the back.
So you're only open Friday, Saturday?
What was that name?
You're only open Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And like they said, okay, now I understand, maybe like when they throw the garbage, it's a metal can, maybe when they throw the bottle, maybe they're listening to sound, maybe I can do one thing, I can tell them to throw the garbage in the morning and leave it there. Because I don't understand, maybe they open the door, my employees will be like, there are fifteen employees standing outside, smoking a cigarette, but because they're not allowed to drink, so maybe from the bag, if there is bottle or something on the floor, I can put people to do that, like not to throw it at night because it's an alley there. But we are not open them. I can bring you the whole footage, you can check on that and then decide to give me the permit or no. We were never open Tuesdays, Wednesdays and nowadays even, not even Thursday, since the last three, four months. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant or for staff?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to deny the conditional use permit renewal for sell and onsite consumption of alcohol beverages.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to deny the conditional use permit as requested for onsite conception of alcohol beverages at, uh, six oh eight North Sherry Road. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Five zero and that would be, you know, it doesn't require an ordinance. All right, uh, I think that concludes our public hearing. Uh, the next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled?
Mayor, I'm more to approve the consent agenda for items number eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to, um, approve the consent agenda as, uh, as presented along with resolution number one seven eight four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Mayor, Council, uh, good afternoon. The next item is approval of ordinance number, it would be fifty-two oh two. Rescinding ordinance forty-six seventy-four, which is the all-inclusive committee, forty-six seventy-five beautification committee, forty-six seventy-six cemetery board, forty-six seventy-seven downtown revitalization committee, forty-six seventy-eight millennium advisory board, forty-six seventy-nine water development committee, forty-six eighty recycling advisory board, forty-six eighty-one temporary aggie and longhorn band committee, forty-six eighty-two wellness advisory board, forty-six eighty-three mission rail bridge advisory committee, forty-seven twenty-three workforce readiness, forty-seven twenty-four the twenty-fifty committee and forty-seven twenty-five former elected officials committee, forty-seven eighty-eight drainage committee. committee, 4788 drainage committee and 4899 veterans advisory board. We're asking to rescind these, these ordinances.
Any discussion?
I move for approval, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the rescinding of the ordinances as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously and that would be ordinance number 5202.
That is correct.
Mayor, I have a comment if I could make it. After a meeting with Ms. Anna, she said that you had a wonderful idea in reference to the three committees that I personally thought were great ideas, the beautification, the downtown revitalization and the recycling. And I think that making one big committee encompassing all of that and maybe possibly making it a 501(c)(3) so that we can get beautification going in the city of Mission, I love that idea.
Yeah, so we're, some of these are going to get kind of combined and, and brought back, but with a different scope. So we're not, we're not totally ignoring all these issues, we're just, we're just getting more, a little more organized.
Consolidated.
Yeah, consolidated. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, next item.
Yes, ma'am. Item 26 are board appointments. This is for the Mission Economic Development Corporation and the Mission Education Development Council. We currently have a vacancy with the resignation of Mr. David De Anda. And so mayor's recommendation is to appoint Richard Hernandez to replace Mr. De Anda who resigned and also to appoint Mr. Aviel Flores as the alternate to the mayor's position for the Mission Economic Development Corporation and the Mission Education Development Council. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the board appointment as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Authorization to purchase in-car video systems.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Item number 27, staff is seeking authorization to purchase in-car video systems and body cameras to outfit five new patrol units from Motorola Solutions at a cost of $70,470 via Sourcewell contract 010720- WCH. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the request to authorize the in-car video system and body cams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Item number 28, staff is seeking authorization to purchase laptops to outfit five new patrol units from South Texas Communications at a cost of $35,999.24 via DIR contract DIR TSO 4025. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the authorization to purchase laptop via DIR contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Item 29 is approval of final action, final annual action plan 2022, 23 and authorize city manager to execute sub-precipitation agreements for those receiving fiscal year 22 CDBG allocations. The 2022 CDBG allocation is $1,002,485. The activities recommended are as follows. Amigos del Valle 20,000, Area Agency on Aging 3,000, Easter Seals RGV 3,000, Camp University 3,000, Hope Medical Services 3,000, Comfort House 3,000, Casa Vidal County 1,000, Children's Advocacy Center 5,000, Silver Ribbon 3,000, Housing Assistance Program 678,844, Housing Administration 105, Program Administration 175. Public hearings were held to solicit input on the annual action plan. A 30-day comment period ended on July 11, 2022. No public comments were received. Staff and city council, city manager recommend approval.
Were there any questions? Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the final audit action plan for 22, 23 for, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item number 30 is the approval of the May 22 financial statements. Total revenues for the month were $7,419,191 and total expenditures were $10,775,615, leaving an estimated fund balance of $36,834,712. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the May 22 financial statements as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Item number 31 is the approval of the May 2022 tax collection report. The total adjusted 2021 tax levy for taxes was $26,012,764.25 and the amount of collections as of May 31, 2022 is $24,951,662.23, which represents 95.92% of the total 2021 tax levy. The total adjusted tax levy for dilating taxes was $2,411,598.76 and the amount of collections as of May 31, 2022 is $516,656.80, which represents 21.42% of the total tax levies from previous years. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the May 22, 2022 tax collection report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 32 is the acceptance of the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending March 31, 2021 and interest earned for the three months ending March 31, 20, for the six months, I'm sorry, ending March 31, 2021. This is got, acceptance of the quarterly report is required by the Public Funds Investment Act, section 2256.023 of the Texas Government Code. The total increases to investment balances for the period were $1,247,485.11 and total decreases were $248,000, leaving a total of $22,215,484.77 in outstanding investments for the quarter and the total interest earned on all funds year-to-date was $41,741.6. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I want to approve, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the quarterly reports as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item.
Item number 33 is approval of the budget, of two budget amendments. The first budget amendment in the general fund is for $52,677 in expenditures to cover the additional costs for the general and runoff elections for city council. The second budget amendment is in the MDC fund, $50,000 in expenditures to cover costs for additional incentive programs approved by the MDC board for small business aid. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
Mayor, I have a question. Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Hello. How is that broken up, the $52,677? Like how much was a general election and how much was a runoff?
So we had a budget of $50,000, the $52,000 was in addition, so it was a total of 102,000.
For both elections?
For, the first election was 20, a little over 20,000 and that was because we shared it amongst.
We shared it, that was just shared. And then the runoff was city of Mission by themselves, so that one was 73,000.
Really?
Yes.
And the first one was what, 50 some?
No, it was 20, 29.
But so it was 60, because 29 and 29. How much did the school district pay?
Oh, I don't know, because you see, they have one less location than we do.
Oh, and it was three, Sherry.
And then, and then the also STC, whatever locations they shared, we covered.
So our part was 20?
Yes, and then on, on the runoff, the city of Mission was by themselves.
So for the two races was 73,000?
No, it was 105, 105.
105, we go to the 50.
Oh, I'm sorry, for the runoff, for the two places, for the mayor in place one was 102.
No, 73.
73. So in total, it was 102 for both. Really, I always thought it was only going to be 30,000.
It used to be, yeah.
It used to be. And this is going to the county, right? To Vidal County?
Well, it went to the vendors of all the equipment. The county on the runoff got, their administrative fee was $6,000 and in the general election, their administrative fee was about 2,800.
Ms. Anna, and do you think it's because of the new machines that they're using too, that the technology made the pricing a little higher?
And then based on how many locations and how much, how many machines that you use, you know, it, it just all factors in.
No, I just wanted that to be on the record, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, there, there is a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, item 34, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 34 is a presentation of preliminary budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. As per the city charter, city manager between 60 to 90 days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year shall submit to city council a proposed budget in which the budget shall be provided its complete financial plan for the fiscal year presented as a preliminary budget. As, as we discussed in the workshop, it was a preliminary budget as we expect certified values for ad valorem this week as per the county and then also we won't get a certified tax rate calculation until the first week of August. So preliminary, this is a budget that's subject to change, but preliminary, we're looking at general fund, total appropriations of 55.3 million, a total special funds of 41 million, a enterprise funds of 37 million, a debt service of 6.1 million, capital projects 9.1 and the group health, a trust fund 6.8 million, a total of all funds 155,600,626. This preliminary budget, again, we will have a scheduled workshop, the second week of August, August the 10th, tentatively at 4:30 to discuss the, once we have certified values and also property tax rate calculation. At that point, we will be bringing up this preliminary budget. However, this preliminary budget will be available to the public in our website and also at city secretary's office.
Okay. And the action that we need to take is just the acceptance of the presentation?
Yes.
Is that correct? Move for approval? To accept it?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the presentation as, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, ma'am. Item 35 is to set the public hearing date for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget. The city manager is requesting to set the public hearing for the budget on Monday, August the 8th, 2022, as required by our city charter, section 9.06, notice of public hearing on budget. At the meeting of the city council at which the budget is being submitted, the city council shall fix the time and place of the public hearing of the budget and shall cause to be published in the newspaper and general circulation within the city of Mission. A notice of the hearing setting forth the time and place thereof at least 10 days before the date of the such hearing. The public hearing is to give interest, interested parties the opportunity to be heard. The public hearing date, time and location will be published in the local newspaper. Staff recommendation is to approve the public hearing date for fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget on August the 8th, 2022.
Not approve. You have to approve.
Move for approval of the date? There's a motion and a second to set the hearing date for the 22, 23 annual budget for August the 8th, 2022. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And next item, chief.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Item 36, the Mission, Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase a handheld chemical identifier from Far West via sole source vendor. The Mission Fire Department received a pool to accept a grant from the 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program supplemental statement of grant award through the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council. The amount of purchase for the equipment in total of $48,640. No matching funds are required. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Mayor, I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The, is the grant for that exact amount?
It's actually for 70,000.
Okay.
This is just the capital outlay amount, the rest are more smaller, smaller items in regards to how does, how does this material incidents?
Got it. My second, mayor.
There's a motion and a second to authorize a purchase of a handheld chemical identifier. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Five zero, thank you. Next item, chief Doris.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager. We're asking for authorization to accept the 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program funds from the Office of the Governor, grant number 4521201. This grant will allow our department to purchase kinetic energy door breaching tool and a wall lift tracker wall penetration radar. This affirmation equipment will be utilized by our SWAT members during critical operations. The total amount of the grant is $13,060. There is no match required from the city of Mission. Staff and city manager request approval for this grant award.
Want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the 2022 Homeland Security Grant Program funds in the amount of $13,060. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number 38 is seeking consideration and possible action of approving the use of ARPA funding for a one-time hazard pay to eligible city civil service employees and jailers. The city of Mission has been awarded federal funding from the American Rescue Plan Act's state and local fiscal recovery funds due to the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. An allowable category to use the funding includes hazard pay for essential workers who worked during the COVID-19 public health emergency and whose positions are those in critical infrastructures, sectors that have had direct contact with the general public. A total of 256 city of Mission civil service employees and jailers who worked after March 15, 2021 would receive a hazard pay credit of $100 per month employed, not to exceed 10 months for a maximum total of $1,000 minus deductions. Active employees as of July 25th, 2022 will receive this benefit. The total estimated cost for this hazard pay is $296,572 and will come from the second tranche of funding received from the US Treasury. The payment will be scheduled for distribution on August 5th of this year if, if, if council wishes.
Want to approve.
Move for approval, second. There's a motion and a second to approve the ARPA state and local recovery funding for a one-time hazard pay to eligible city civil service employees and jailers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is unfinished business and I don't believe we have any of that. Routine matters, city manager, comments?
Yes, mayor, I do have just a couple of comments to invite the public. We are having our last Movies on the Lawn this Thursday, July 28th, at the Mission Event Center at 7:00 PM. Everyone is invited and welcome. It is a free event and it's for the family and everyone to, to join us there at, at the event center. Also, we are going to be hosting in partnership a food distribution on Thursday, August the 4th from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Mission Food Pantry. Again, that's a free food distribution for the community that will be Thursday, August 4th, 2022. And also the last item is we are partnering up with the Texas Fiestas. They are hosting a car show this Saturday, July 30th, from 3:30 to 7:30 at the Mission Event Center. It is another free event for the community. Everyone is welcome to attend. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments today. Ms. Jess?
No comments, mayor.
No comments, mayor. No comment.
Okay, there being no comments by our city council, we're going to move on to executive session pursuant to. session pursuant to V T C A Government Code, Section 551.001, consultation with attorney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, I think we might be more comfortable in the community's room. We have three people here from Get Us Able.
Okay. All righty.
This is a work in progress, by the way. I was outside cleaning the pool. So we'll see how it grows back.
May I have a motion to go back into open session?
Make a motion, so move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into open session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Harry, is he in the seat?
He stepped out. He stepped out at, uh, it was twenty-five minutes in, six thirty-five.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
On item thirty-nine, we had an update as status of active and potential litigation by our outside counsel, Gera and Sabo, regarding Texas Municipal League claims, and it was very informative, but there was no action.
Thank you. There being no other items, this, uh, meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.